Okay, let's call this meeting to order.
Councilmember Doncheck.
Here.
Councilmember Swartz.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Potem Ham.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
First item on the agenda is oral communications, and I do have a card.
We have a card from Juan Gonzalez. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Juan Gonzalez from SoCal Gas. Wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself as your new local public affairs manager in the region. I've been recently assigned, just again, wanted to take the opportunity to reach out to you. I had the opportunity to reach, to speak with the city manager. I'm looking forward to meeting with all of you in the near future, along with your public works director. So, great to see some familiar faces in council, and again, wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself to you, all of you. Secondly, also wanted to continue, in terms of our promotion, to remind your constituents, our customers, any activity being done in the home, to call Dig Alert, call 811 before you dig. We've been having a lot of issues of third-party members digging into lines and not hitting our lines and/or hitting other utilities, so we want to avoid that. So, anybody doing any conversions or any activity in their backyard or expansions of their home, please call 811 before you dig. So, thank you so much, I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you for your time.
811 before you dig?
Before you dig, that's correct.
All right, great.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Juan, appreciate you coming out. Even the card? No, sorry, there? Okay, great.
Okay, can we have a motion of way reading at full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved.
Motion by Ward, second by Doncheck, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Okay. First item on the agenda is...
I think this may be...
Are we being televised? Why is there a [inaudible]?
This is a special meeting, we typically don't have it recorded before it's posted.
We're discussing governance without it being televised?
This is consistent with what we've done with other special meetings.
Yeah, yeah, I want to talk about this for a minute. So, we're having a meeting where we're talking about the governance of the city of San Clemente, and we're not televising it so that the community can engage?
What do you mean by that?
And the four of you are fine with that? It's being recorded, it's not happening in real time.
Okay.
So, if you care about term limits, or if you care about the transient occupancy tax, you have no opportunity to participate. And these, in my view, are two of the bigger...
You mean participate real time?
People do that. They get in their car and they come down. They, I've had a call from a reporter on Monday, wondering why this agenda happened off-cycle to begin with.
Is this being broadcast live on the...
No, it's not live, it's a delayed recording.
If it's a typical process for a special meeting, then it doesn't come as a surprise. I hear your sensitivity.
It's not a sensitivity, it's a representation issue. We represent 65,000 people, of which 64,996, 95 of them, minus these folks, aren't at the table. It's an issue for me.
Okay, so, can we post-post meeting 30 minutes and get it online?
I think we could probably do it quicker than...
Let me check with the cable television and I get back to council.
So, why don't we take a recess for 15 minutes while we try and get it online, and see if we can get it done?
Thank you. I think it's important, especially given the nature of this agenda, in that...
And I think maybe, from a special meeting perspective going forward, we probably ought to gauge the policy matters we're deliberating on, and then, and then make that decision to broadcast or to tape record.
Do you want council to make the decision, or continue to be?
I do think council should make the decision, and I think, I, at least, and I think I speak for my colleagues, we stand by the daylighting of the issues, and this is a situation where, you know, these are not routine issues if I read the agenda correctly.
I'm trying to think about some of the special meetings we've had in the past.
And even the budget meetings, we've gone back and forth. If we felt they needed to be broadcast, they were.
Yeah, and we could, and we should be able to do that at the time we approve going to a, or we're approving to a special meeting, at that time we should...
Do you want workshops?
You know, I got to refer to this as becoming more of a topic of discussion than it is just taking adjournment and coming back in 15 minutes, so. That's true, we'd probably have to agendize. I think in the future, we're sensitive to the item, and so we probably ought to get direction in future council meetings to, for these types of meetings.
Yeah, why don't we agendize it for the next regular meeting?
So, I make a motion, we adjourn for 15 minutes? Motion by him? I did, no, no, I could just call, I could just call recess.
Yeah, and you already did.
Okay. Why don't I go ahead and make it for 20 minutes? Give us a little bit of time to get this figured out. So, we'll come back at around five or six minutes to the hour. Great. Okay, we will, we already convened the meeting, we will now reconvene the meeting, and we're out of recess. We will begin this, though, by giving the pledge of allegiance. I will, I will be the one who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand, join me.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So much better.
Okay. I received another card for oral communications.
So, can, can we do the following? I know we have a recording, and we have the public meeting. Let's just go ahead and reset the whole thing. We'll capture, we'll, you know, Juan, if you, if you couldn't, please come on up, and let's just, let's just restart the whole meeting, if that would be okay?
We should do the roll call?
And do the roll call and everything.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's very unusual, folks, but because we want to get everything on the record and the video and everything, I feel it best that we just start from the beginning.
Okay. Councilmember Doncheck.
Here.
Councilmember Swartz.
Still here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Potem Ham.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
And we just did the pledge, so the first item on the agenda is oral communications, with a card from Juan Gonzalez.
Juan, the council heard you, so now it's for the public.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Juan Gonzalez, SoCal Gas. I wanted, again, take this opportunity to introduce myself to the council as the new local public affairs manager. I've been recently assigned in your, in this particular area, so I'm covering the cities from Lake Forest all the way down to San Clemente. I'll share with you, local from Orange County, so I'm very excited to be here at home and be able to represent my company in the different organizations, different city jurisdictions, so, so thank you. Additionally, I also wanted to provide information regarding our promotion, and share with, with our customers, your constituency, in regards to any activity taking place at home, any expansions or any backyard work. If you're doing any digging, call Dig Alert, call 811, call before you dig, to try to avoid hitting any major power lines or any gas lines, as we've been having issues with third-party contractors hitting gas lines, and that becomes a major issue. So, call Dig Alert, call 811, call before you dig. Thank you very much, council, again, for the opportunity. Look forward to working with all of you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Appreciate you coming out.
Sound rehearsed.
Okay, and can we have a motion of way reading at full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved.
Motion by Ward, second by Doncheck, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Okay, and council determined that I will agendize for future consideration policy regarding televising of council meetings?
Uh, yes, and when it would be appropriate, including special meetings and regular meetings, and just to set some formal guidelines for, you know, the transparency question.
Okay, and I did receive another card for oral...
Oh, for oral communications?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Jean. Yeah, we, we were trying to get re-centered here. We're a little bit thrown off our, our cycle here. Although, his bowtie kind of brings it all back around, you know. I just love the bowtie, I think it's tremendous.
Thank you. So, last meeting, I did come here, and I discussed the state of the police services station. There are three items that you really need to look at, and I apologize, I should have come with prepared, with written remarks prior. These items are not something I should discuss in public, not something that would be, it would endanger officer safety, public safety. But as you can see, one, two, and three, particularly three, should be a major concern to each and every one of you, particularly when there is a lack of number one. Almost sounds like potty talk, but, but it's something that I ask you to look at. I implore you to, to look at. But I will talk about the others. The general appearance of the station downstairs, it's just terrible. It's, it's disgusting. We don't put the firefighters in, in a work, work environment like that. Your other city employees aren't, aren't in an environment like that. The, you know, the carpet is in excess of 25 years old, and quite honestly, it smells like it's 25 years old. There's a bunk area for deputies, and you may not be aware of this, but many of our deputies sleep overnight in that bunk area, rather than commuting, commuting to, to the inland empire, or wherever they may, may live. And that bunk area is, might be fit for livestock, but that's about it. I would be very concerned about the quality of their life. Not to mention, I don't know, this is outside my ballywick, but I would be concerned about asbestos, I'd be concerned about mold. Hopefully, someone has looked into it. This is a leadership thing. This is about people caring about people, people caring about the people who put their lives in jeopardy for our, our public safety. And I think, you know, in the absence of city management getting involved, I would ask the city council to get involved, or have city management get, get involved. I still don't understand why the citywide CCTV system is not, does not have, the, the police services does not have access to that. And these are the kind of things that I'm concerned about. Then I, and ladies, I ask you, walk into the ladies' room downstairs. I, and this is not a housekeeping thing, this is a major plumbing issue down there. It has the stench of urine, and it is disgusting, to say, to say the least. And this is what our public will experience when they come into our police services department. And, and lastly, the structure, as you all well know, again, outside, well outside my ballywick, but the structural integrity of that building, there is... Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean.
Before you walk away, I'm concerned by the fact that the five of us have this, that it's now a public record. I, it feels to me like we should give these back to Mr. James, given the nature of the content, because, well, because there's, there's thing, you know, you know what I'm saying, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah. I appreciate it, but I think that, I think the process, the venue has to be different than a public...
So, here's to...
You see, you see what I'm saying? That it's a public...
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just...
So, if we receive it, it becomes a public record, and we, it's subject to...
And there's things in here that I'm curious how you even got access to observe.
If you give me a couple of minutes, I'll, I'll...
No, no.
No, no, Jean, I think it would be best, if you wouldn't mind, to have a conversation with Eric.
And James.
And, and James, and spell out your concerns, and they can receive that information. We've already heard some of the things from your previous, I've scheduled some time, spent some time with the chief about these questions. I think there are some immediate things we can do here, but of course, the council would have to be behind it. So, if you wouldn't mind giving Erica a call, and he can, you know, take those items down, and then, and then, in an appropriate, secure venue, communicate some of the list items, and, and then we can take care of it that way. Because it's, some of the security things we're doing around town, for example, they've never come to a public meeting, because primarily, those concerns, you don't want to be...
I understand.
...out there, so.
And I, please don't understand that as me being dismissive, I just, you have, you are a lot of expertise, and I think it needs to be managed carefully, because you've got eyes that a lot of us don't have.
Just let me say one thing. The way I got access was, I asked for a tour of, of the station, and Lieutenant Peters granted me that, that access. That's how I got there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean.
Just to clarify, mayor staff, I'll reach out to Mr. James and schedule a meeting in the near future.
That would be great, thank you.
Next item is consideration, execution of city council argument and possible rebuttal as drafted by a subcommittee of the city council in favor of a measure on the November 6, 2018 general municipal election ballot relating to increasing the transient occupancy tax and clarifying the definition of hotels that are subject to the tax. And I have one speaker card.
Any more cards on this item? First speaker is Dan Bain. If you do want to speak on this item, please get a card submitted.
Thank you, council, Dan Bain. I'll be brief. I was hoping to speak on actually two items. I think I have some, just general overarching comments on these initiatives. The main issue is, it seems like it's a little bit rushed. When we did the districting petition, the council deemed it necessary to, to kick that off for two years, and do a study on the policy considerations, and look at the districting issue. And I'm wondering if we've done the same on the TOT tax, or on the other, which, the other agenda item, which is the, the term limits, and I'll talk about that next. But it'd be nice to know if there's a specific need that the city's trying to feel, to field with this, this tax, whether it's just a, a need for a, a general fund item, or if there's a specific cost allocation that this is going to be applied to, and frankly, what the TOT tax is going to do to, to local businesses, and what, if anything, that's going to do to, to business, for tourism, et cetera. So, I'm wondering if we can kick this off, if we can look at some sort of a study, because again, all this sort of seems rushed at the 12th hour. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have before us the consideration of the city council argument, possible rebuttal as drafted by the subcommittee. Joanne, I have a copy for myself. Has it been circulated the rest of the council?
No.
Okay, all right, it hasn't, so.
Mayor, I've learned that the two of us were supposed to have brought copies, but Mr. Sun said we can use his copy machine.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
We'll reimburse you, Mr. Sun, for that. A buck twenty-five, here you go.
And I would do it, but I don't have an ID number, so.
In the meantime, I will read the argument, so we can deliberate on the question. Is that appropriate? Uh, it would, would it be okay if I read the, the argument that we've prepared?
I was just asking the city attorney. I will say that when they're filed with me, they're confidential until the end of the filing period, so.
It's all right, because they're coccing it, to put it together, then it'll be closed, I know.
It is. This is, this is a little bit of uncharted territory, you know, in a lot of ways, but that's okay. We're being careful, because caution is the better road in this regard. So, here's what was prepared for consideration tonight, and this is an argument in favor of Measure XX, which is increase hotel tourist tax in city San Clemente. Vote yes on Measure XX, and this is the, the text of the measure argument. The transit occupancy tax, TOT, also known as a hotel tourist tax, is paid by hotel and vacation rental visitors to help support municipal services in San Clemente. A yes vote would result in a modest tax increase to these visitors while providing, providing much-needed revenue for vital city services. Unlike many cities around us, the San Clemente TOT has not been changed since 1991. The rate increase from 10% to 12.5% would affect visitors of San Clemente hotels and short-term lodging establishments. Measure XX would generate approximately 5,700 in new revenue annually to the San Clemente General Fund. It is a sensible approach to the challenge confronting our city of 65,000-plus residences, restraining to provide services to an estimated 2 million visitors each year. This new revenue would be 100% locally controlled and help provide enhanced fire and police protection, emergency response services, and improved maintenance of public areas such as beaches, parks, sidewalks, the streets, and other services used by extensively, other services extensively used by tourists. The San Clemente City Council unanimously supports this rate change as a practical answer to the recent rapid increase in demand for city services while ensuring fiscal health. The TOT increases are fair, is an equitable way for visitors who utilize city services to pay their fair share. Your city council respectfully requests a yes vote on Measure XX to help protect and maintain essential services and our local quality of life, with our signature lines.
And just for the record, the measure letter has not been determined yet. When you're saying XX, that just means fill it in?
Oh, measure fill it in, excuse me, I should have said that, so.
Yes.
Uh, the or is just, I don't know, where did that come from?
There's probably an F missing.
Yeah, designed for, you would ask that question, to see if you paid attention. It was a trick.
Oh, you know why? Because when I did the first draft, I put the original one from 2016 as a starter, because there had been conversation among the four of us that maybe we should just use that one over again, so I had that one, and then or, and then this version, so that should be deleted.
Okay, so, can I?
It's an open forum, go ahead, Steve.
So, I, you're gonna have to redo this anyway, you misspelled my name, but beyond that.
What the?
We did.
I, I will, I will not be signing this, and I will not be supporting this. I'm on record from two years ago, when it was brought up, that I, I wouldn't support a TOT that was general in nature. If we want to raise funds specifically for police services and other services, I will get behind that. But I'm not gonna, not gonna support a general tax increase on the TOT.
You weren't at the last meeting.
I watched it.
Oh, you did? Okay. Because we went over the 1967 original TOT. It did say for tourism, but then it listed all of the infrastructure that it would help pay for. So, this is, in my opinion, no different than what we did before. It still is for tourism, but it's to help with the costs of providing that infrastructure.
I know, but the money goes into the general fund, and it's a general tax.
It does, but if you remember, our budget this year is really close.
I, I don't disagree that we might look for ways to raise revenue. I have other suggestions to do that. I'm just not gonna support this way, this method.
So, I, I'm okay with everything it says, and being that Mr. Swartz wants to opt out, I just say we strike the, what would be, one, two, third paragraph, first line from, it started, we'd strike from the to supports, so then it would read, "This rate change is impractical."
And you could say the majority, and you could say the majority of the council.
We could just take unanimously out.
Oh, okay, I'm comfortable. I just didn't want to, that, to me, still feels like we're putting words in Steve's mouth, but he's, if he's comfortable with that language, then I'm cool with that, too.
So, delete unanimously.
So, Steve, you would, you would only support a specific tax, where you'd have to get a dedicated funding? Like, it would, it would be dedicated towards something?
Yes, if we're gonna raise, I, I, my concern is, is we're creating a tax that will be going on indefinitely, and... My concern is, is we're creating a tax that will be going on indefinitely and available for whatever spending any future city council can have. And although best intentions of this city council is to spend it specifically on this... On that area, that doesn't mean two years from now, they don't decide to change the budget and do whatever they want. The tax is already there. We can't do anything about it. So it's just... It's... I'm sorry, but that's just the way I... That's my being. I just don't like the blank... Blank check tax.
So I have a question. You've got the original TOT rate was voted on as a general tax measure with 50%. Can you designate an increase as a specific tax that's dedicated? So you'd only take that two... So that 2.5% would be dedicated to a source?
Correct. There are requirements, but yes, you could do that, where you're specifically earmarking the tax revenue received from that incremental increase. And I live with the city attorney. It would require a supermajority at the ballot box in order to pass. And then there is responsibility to the city, then, from a reconciliation and accounting standpoint, to be able to show that money is separated and it's used for what it's told to be used for, whether it's... Whatever council's direction would be.
Chris, you get anything on this?
No, I think you guys did a great job. I'm gonna support it, even without "the" unanimously in there. I see what Mr. Swartz is saying. But, you know, my concern is, today it's public safety, tomorrow it might be roads. And so I believe that we're gonna elect fiscal stewards of our money, and they're gonna know how to appropriately manage that money. We've done so for the past 20 years pretty well, and hopefully for the next 20 years going forward, groups after us will do the same.
Lori, you have any comments?
I have questions once we... If we have consensus in terms of next steps, so that... Because as the subcommittee, you and I have to make sure this gets wherever it needs to go without... But I'm... I totally understand your point of view, and it is a dilemma that anything that... The more specific you get, the more a supermajority comes into play. And so I can respect your different opinion on this.
Yeah. I also see your perspective on that. I think one of the challenges that we grapple with in our modern day... We all work in the environment we're in. And one of the great challenges we face, I think, as a city is, is that we are still a city in the state of California. And we have an ever-escalating expenses on a number of different fronts that we don't have any control of. We have zero control over. And so we also are providing world-class services to visitors to our town. And as a bedroom community, you know, we're happy to do so. But we also provide a whole series of other services, not specifically related to public service, for example, maintenance and parking enforcement, and all these different things that feed and that come from the general fund. You know, one of the challenges with the specific fund, at least the specific taxes there, is that a lot of the times, the original intention of said tax becomes so strict and rigorous that it... First of all, it's... From a management point of view, it's a little difficult, but it becomes like our beach parking fund. We have all this money that... No, should I have not said that? I'm just kidding. But, you know, you get to the point where you're managing your... So, well, is this a public... Is this a true public safety expense? You open yourself up to lawsuits. A lot of the times, especially on these types of taxes, the residents are gonna have to look at this and say, you know, will you continue to balance budgets? Will you continue to allocate funds to needs? You know, there's obviously a call for more deputies going forward. And frankly, unless a massive pot of money shows up out of nowhere, we're gonna have to make tough decisions, and this helps make that better. So I'm... You know, I've gone the whole spectrum on this question, but I do believe with the situation we're presented with, particularly from an escalating cost perspective and a community that lacks significant economic generation in terms of taxation, this is something we absolutely have to remedy.
And may I respond to the member of the public who spoke about moving quickly? On this particular one, the council contemplated it two years ago, and extensive research was done on what was doing... What was being done across cities in California, and our measure failed by eight or nine or 10 votes, depending on how you counted it. Between then and now, some polling was done to test the appetite of the community on this kind of a visitor-serving tax, and we got a green light from that. So the process on this has been a two-year process, and it considered all different versions of what's happening around the state.
Yeah. And I would just like to add to it that I understand, and I understand the desire, and I am 100% behind figuring out how to pay and get more sheriff deputies out on the road. It's just isn't a way that I can support. You know, I would prefer to have a quarter percent increase in our sales tax, where everyone across the board, visitors and residents, and everyone are putting some money in the pot to help... To help, you know, pay for that. I mean, there's other ways. And then I would also like to generate some assistance to our businesses, so we can grow our sales tax revenues. So... But we don't... That's not on the board right now. This is. And so I just can't... Because it's too general for me, as far as the spending goes on, and I'm gonna pass.
Mayor, can I speak now?
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just wanted to fact-check a couple of facts in here. Is it true that it is 1991?
Yes. We fact-checked that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then on that same line, the word "short-term" I think should be hyphenated. Short-term lodging.
Okay.
And then the second paragraph where it says "estimated 2 million visitors a year," was that fact-checked also?
Yes, and that was on the previous ballot argument. And it has been used... Beaches, Parks and Recreation has that data.
Okay. Just checking, because I think there was a problem last time with "years."
We also checked the... We looked at the census for the... It's actually 65,200 and something people, so we put a plus in for that.
All right. So I'm gonna be supportive of it. I think our visitors are not helping pay the fair share of our infrastructure, so I'll be supporting doing this.
Okay. Do we need to vote on this question?
I would recommend that.
So with the changes that Kathy incorporated, Lori, did you have any other changes besides that? We took out unanimously, and we removed Steve's signature line.
And we added a hyphen between "short" and "term," and we deleted "or."
Yep. Okay. With those changes, do I have a motion? Motion by him?
Second.
Second by word. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 4-0. So I think the process...
Is it 4-0-1? Or you're against?
All those opposed.
Opposed.
Okay. So it passes 4-1. So as a next step, I can make the edits and produce a clean copy.
You can clean that up. Do you have the form of statement? Because you might want to have everyone sign that now, and then you'll be giving it to me by close of business on Friday. No. The cover sheet does not have to be signed. In fact, you could just do a slash S, and then "Tim Brown, Mayor." Even if you did sign it, it would appear in the sample ballot that way with a slash S. They don't publish the signatures. But you have to sign the form of statement that gets attached.
And as a point of clarification, I just want to clarify, when the mayor read off the initial statement, the revenue that would be produced would be $570,000. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Oh, that's... What? Is that what I said?
He said $5700.
That's a terrible amount of revenue.
I was just clarifying.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So you're getting the signatures up there?
Yes.
Okay. Ready to move on?
Let's go ahead.
One more point of clarification. The item that we were actually doing also spoke about rebuttal, right? So could you walk us through what triggers the need for rebuttal and the timing?
Okay. Well, the arguments are due to me on Friday to close the business. At that time, I will send you, all of you, any argument that was filed in opposition to the measure, and I will give any author of the argument against your argument. You then have until the 17th to do a rebuttal, if you like. So you could do the same thing that we did here, where a subcommittee is formed, and then you all sign together. Or you can also, before August 17th, or even today, if you want to, authorize up to five other people to sign the rebuttal. I would need that in writing. So I suppose you'd need to have another meeting, anyway, to sign the direction to me that you're authorizing the following five people to sign the rebuttal. So it's up to you, either option.
I can speak about this question. I honestly think the ballot advocacy statement is plenty, and I don't really see the value of a rebuttal and a rebuttal and a rebuttal. You know, we state the case definitively, the voters make the decision, and we go from there.
Okay. But the other side would have the option to do a rebuttal to yours. Just be aware.
That's right. But we wouldn't be rebutting their rebuttal, which, right? Which then would...
I think that probably is... Yeah.
You're saying no rebutts?
You will not be rebutting...
No rebutts.
We will not be rebutting.
I'd like to keep the option open. No rebuttal of this moment, but if on Friday we receive something, then that you'll circulate to us, we can talk with the city manager and proceed according. I think so, because if there's something in the rebuttal that we haven't pondered... Yeah. There might be...
Okay.
We would have to have a special meeting for that. I just want to make sure the city attorney is comfortable with that happening at a special meeting as opposed to a regular...
Yeah, that's fine. And that can be a moving target, depending on how many of you contacted Joanne and said you wanted to participate in it.
Okay. So the next item is consideration of a possible ballot measure for the November 6, 2018 general municipal election, or alternatively, calling the general municipal election of November 3, 2020, for a measure relating to term limits for members of the city council. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at your last meeting on July 24th, council requested that the issue of council member term limits be agendized to enable council to consider adding a measure to either the November 6, 2018 ballot or the November 3, 2020 general election ballot. Limitations may be placed on the number of consecutive terms that council members may serve, and may also be placed on the number of terms that a person may serve during his or her lifetime. And in your packet, the city attorney has drafted an ordinance and ballot questions for either options. You're not obligated to state of those options in terms of the timeframe. For example, I think that the draft says two council member terms and then a two-year hiatus. That's all can be amended, but they're... There's a starting point for discussion. And so that you're aware, if the voters approve the measure at the 2018 election, the way that the ordinance is written is that people elected in 2018 would be captured in the term limit ordinance. So those people, that term would be the first thing served. So they only apply to terms of office that commence after the ordinance is adopted. So even if someone has served, you know, three or four terms already, it would be their next election after that that kicks in. So the staff report includes the ballot questions as drafted by the city attorney. It includes the text of the measure as drafted, and now it's up to you. If you do the 2020 election, you do need to call the election for that election. First, you call an election. Yeah. We can't add it to a measure where it hasn't been called yet. But we can get through all that if you want. I think that the first thing, do you want to do it? Do you want to do it for 2018? Do you want to do it for 2020? And which option?
Chris, why don't you lead off on this one?
Yeah. So this is a question that I've brought up a few times in the last year. The biggest thing is, I want to address this question while we still have Lori as a member of this board, because she's served three consecutive terms. So I think her input would be valuable to this discussion. I'm not... I don't have any preconceived notions of whether it's this election or next election. I think it's just a question that needs to be posed to the public. I think it's something that a lot of communities do, based on the staff report, and I think it would be beneficial for the community to have a turnover. And it would be a good thing to make people step down who've had a long term, you know? So I'm open to discussion on either of them. I will say, you know, before discussion, I'm probably not gonna be interested in the two lifetime terms. I think that's a little extreme. You know? Any of you councilmen wants to come back after...
Hold on a second. Do we have any cards on this?
Actually, you do.
Oh, there we go. Okay, all right. So let's hear from the public. Dan Bain. Anybody else on this matter? Nope.
Thank you again, Dan Bain. Sorry, I was benefiting from the discussions. So I think Chris raised some of the questions that I had. I think it's interesting that we have this ballot measure. I seem to recall this being proposed back in 2009. I think it was Charles Mann that brought it up and proposed this particular measure. So I don't have any real inclination, put it in front of the public, let them vote on it. The question that I would have, though, is again, have we done any studies looking at this as a policy perspective? You say there's a lot of communities, Chris, that do this. What are those communities? What's the input on that? Let's have staff take a look at it and put it out in 2020 and put it to the public. I'm all for that. But again, I feel like this is a little bit rushed. I've never heard any discussion of this since 2009, when it was initially proposed. So let's take a look at it and let the public know what the policy is and have some further discussion on it. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I'll just address those concerns. First and foremost, in the staff report that was publicized over 72 hours ago, it states that of the 34 cities, only nine don't have term limits. South Orange County, I think, were one of the only ones.
Only nine, though.
Only nine.
So it's gone from 13 to nine.
So it says in the report, right? Yeah. Also reference the report, but it's nine. We did bring this issue up, I think, about six weeks ago. Tim and I discussed it at Councilmember Riedhams. So it's come up here and there. Like I mentioned, I'm not beholden to this election or the next one. I think my biggest issue is, being that you have the experience, Lori, you've seen council members that have served more terms than three in your tenure here. I think you have a perspective on it that I'm not gonna have, and Tim doesn't have, and Steve doesn't have. So I just... I think we need to talk about it while you're here, because you have the experience, so...
Okay. Lori, or Steve, or Kathy? Any comments?
Yeah. I'll cut in before... Yeah. I have no problem with the concept at all. It kind of makes sense. I'm all for rotating our leadership, so that we always have people that are coming here with, you know, concepts and fresh concepts from what they've been dealing with, that we sometimes get so inundated with current things, and those that are concerned about And those that are concerned about those current things, that we kind of get blinded at times. So to have that and also to give an opportunity for a council member to take two-year break and then come back in is something I would think, if they wanted to try to, if they went through two years and then realized, okay, maybe it wasn't as stupid as I thought when I ran. So I agree. I also think that maybe we're trying to jam it to get it onto 2018 ballot, and there's no real reason for that, that, you know, to let it percolate and show our intent. And those yeas or nays can work their way out through it till the 2020 election. But other than that, I completely support whatever the council wishes to go on this.
Let me address one more thing that I forgot to mention. Lori provided this staff report from 2009, and in there it talks about commissions and committee members as well. And I think that's a great idea to pose to the voters. You know, one of the biggest things, Steve, and you kind of touched on it, but I think I want to elaborate a little bit more, is, you know, when you have a council member who's been on for 16 years or even 12 years, it's discouraging for people that want to step up and run and serve their community. I know for myself, I didn't want to run two years after the first time I ran, because I was discouraged, because the person I would have to run against has been on for 16 years. And so, you know, this opens up the doors or the floodgates and gives people an opportunity to step up and serve their community in this capacity. And so I think it's a good idea. I'm not tied to the date, like I said, but I would support putting the commissions and committees as well in the same timeframe. So it'd be, well, you'd get an additional, it'd be four terms, I guess. The same timeframe, but terms being different, obviously, because they're two-year terms.
Just for clarification, council has the authority by itself to go ahead and do the term limitations for commissions and committees. It's for the council members that the voters have to approve.
Okay. Yeah.
I think we're doing a review of our committees right now, so maybe that should be part of our review, Eric, with, when we look at our committees, of adding some term limits. Do you remember that we're reviewing those?
I think we were, we were, what was the review?
It was for beaches, parks, and rec, and possibly whether coastal advisory could be blended.
That's right.
And our human affairs committee, you know, what's going on there, so.
That was a discussion that was had at the appointments for those commissions, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think this would be a good time to look at that also.
Okay.
My comments on this would be, I'm not married to 2018 either, but I want to know, if this council did it now, Joanne, could another council change it at 2020? Or is it automatically going to be on?
The measure can be withdrawn from the ballot up until 83 days ahead. So yes, you could put it on, because we have two more years, another council could take it off.
So then, why are we doing it and not picking it tonight as 2018?
So my biggest thing is, I think Lori has some valid input, and I'm waiting to hear what she has to say, because of her experience, not only as a three-term council member, but as a council member who's served alongside council members who are on for three-plus terms, multiple. So she has an insight on this. I mean, I'm not calling anybody out by name, but she has an insight on this of, you know, that we don't have. And so, quite frankly, I want to have this discussion before she steps down, because she has some insight.
Well, one last comment I would make is, this history, this city has a history of, in the past, people had been on council, served one or two terms, went, left, actually went to work for the city of San Clemente, and then years later stopped that and went back on council, and they provided valuable input. So I think it's, we definitely, I don't want to look into a lifetime ban, but if there's a period of two years, like most of the other cities did, I think it's warranted by how, you know, all the other cities picked that option. But it's interesting, when you look at the history, where people have gone back and forth and served, and if they find they're better as an employee, and they have some expertise, such as a city treasurer or something, that's what they should do. So, anyway. But if it could be changed, I think we maybe should consider it for November 2018. If we're going to have this discussion, then Lori's input's going to be in there.
Lori, any comments?
Yeah, since Chris has asked a couple of times. So what I see in front of us is kind of growing pains for the city, you know? It's like we used to be 20,000, now we're 65,000. And what I'd like to do is, in addition to the term limits issue, also talk about the fact that the city clerk is elected and the treasurer is elected, because those are kind of throwbacks from back in the day. And then I do agree with you on the commissions and committees, because this time around, you know, you look, there's some that have been on 16 years, some that have been on 14 years. And it's always important to have experience and fresh thinking. It's a really important balance to have. And it's also important, Chris, to your point, for people to feel like they can have a turn. So that's that. And so I guess my first thought would be, I'd like to package it as governance and put the city clerk, the treasurer, and the term limits and the commissions committees, perhaps, as one bucket of things to improve, yeah, to improve the governance of the city. In terms of term limits, in my 12 years, I went back and looked at it. There were four incumbents that were not reelected. It was Mr. Baker, Mr. Dahl, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Noblock. So the voters do get it, and the voters do kind of handle the term limits, you know, as a percentage of candidacies, you know, we do, it's not like people get in here and they can stay forever. So it's not like it's broken in that way. But having said that, I don't have a problem with term limits. I just would really like to hear from the community. I'd like enough time to hear from them, because the last thing I'll say is, having been on the executive board of the California Joint Powers Insurance Authorities, that's 120 member agencies of, and the cities are about 150,000 or less. And generally speaking, the smaller the town, the more likely you're to finding lifers, you know, people that have been 30 years, have been mayor, you know, have run uncontested. And the larger you get, the more pressure there is on broader representation. And we're kind of big now, you know, so I think term limits probably is a good idea. I just, unlike the thing we just contemplated, which was vetted by staff and we got to hear from the community, I'd like to hear from the community on this. And so I would lean toward the 2020. And I can't imagine you'd get a new council that would disagree with that, because, but odder things have happened.
So I think we're all lining up the same direction here. I also, I do think it's, you know, I do think it's a conversation we should have, and I do think it's a question we should put before the voters. And one that, you know, and I will, I'd like to, perhaps, you know, I think 2018 is probably, it feels too soon, you know? I think that it's worth to get the public to weigh in, to really contemplate the questions about the clerk and the treasurer, to really have some good deliberations. And I also, about the commissions and committees, it's part of the public process, I'd love to hear from them, you know, as to, you know, if we have a lifer in human affairs who just loves it, do we really want to turn him out, you know? And so there's, but the planning commission is more of a deliberative and decision-making body that has binding power, and so do we treat them more like us? And so there's nuances in there, and I think the commissions and committees conversation at the same time. What I'd like to do is maybe we can settle in this meeting on, it sounds like we're all in agreement, but the hiatus, the two-year hiatus seems to be, I think, the better position as opposed to a lifetime ban on council service.
Lifetime limit?
A lifetime limit.
You know, at the JPIA, and maybe the, Scott can speak to this, the three-term model, three-term life model is present. There's, so did you hear about that at all? And you're looking at examples?
No, we just heard about one or the other, but we can certainly track that.
Yeah, I don't know. I kind of like the two-years-on, or four-years, eight-years-on, two-years-off model myself. But there are other things out there.
Well, I would like to bring this back in a future meeting prior to the election, and that we can contemplate the question with those, with the treasurer and the city clerk, questions or ballot items, and then also have an organic discussion about the commissions and committees, and about what we would like to see there in terms of turnover and limits. And also have an opportunity for us to chat with some of the commissioners and the committee members on our own, and really get a flavor for that. I know that some of you have served on these bodies before, and I think it would be valuable. But I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to have this conversation. We're seated council. We could call for the election and place this on the ballot. And if the next city council sees something that we're not seeing, they can remove it. And we could, you know, go from there.
Sorry, Steve won't talk.
Yeah, Steve, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's okay. I just want to say that it seems that there's a difference, including the treasurer and city clerk with city council, seems, city clerk and the city treasurer have a certain skill set and have to deal with a lot of things that being OJ on-job training on a turnover basis may not be as valuable to the city as having people there that are familiar with and continue on. They still, you know, we, you know, if there's an issue, whatever, we can make note of it during their tenure. But I think, I would prefer to see the limitations only on the city council side of the seats, and let the voters determine on the single, the two single spots that we have there, single elected, and that's the treasurer and the city clerk.
Just to be your worst nightmare, I could run for treasurer.
Yeah, but who's going to say?
I could run for city clerk. Anybody, anybody could do it, because they're elected positions, and everything you just said, you know, the skill sets are really sophisticated for both of those jobs. But because it's an elected position...
Were you talking about term limits for clerk and treasurer?
That's what they brought up.
No, 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 we're saying, no, 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 my idea was that they should be appointed positions, not elected. And that's a legislative, we have to, the voters have to say yes. We don't want to vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were trying to do, I thought you were doing, I thought you were doing term limits on it.
No, 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 I'm making them appointed.
We're talking about switching over to an appointment?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And we can have that conversation more in the future about what it is. But to clarify, no, not term limits on the clerk and treasurer. We'd be looking primarily at the commissions, committees, and this council for the term limit question. And I would really like to narrow the conversation to the two-four-year consecutive terms, followed by a minimum two-year hiatus argument versus the other components. And so we can, we can narrow in on that, and that'll help clarify for the public exactly what we're talking about as opposed to, you know, deliberating a whole series of questions. It's already going to be complicated enough as we're talking about, oh, these are items, so we can narrow on that. So if I can get an agreement on that, I'll move that we narrow our, do I need to motion on that? Would that be appropriate?
Well, I was just going to say that you have, because you're dealing with the 2020 election, you could just direct staff to come back whenever, you know, we can come back. Usually, when you're calling an election, you do it around May of the year of the election. And the reason for that, even though you could do it now, but the reason that the registrar of voters tends to discourage that is because a lot can happen in two years. You can have new measures that want to get added. We can't really call the election yet for council members, because we don't know whether it's going to be districts, whether that's going to go through in 2018. So instead of calling the election now, and then doing amendment after amendment after amendment, we could just do it all in 2020. That's an option, or if you really want to call it now, you can.
What about the idea of us doing the deliberations, coming to a decision, and approving a point in time in May of 2020 where the council would take this action, unless they choose not to?
Yes, that's the way it would probably be ideal. And before I forget, just one thing, you know, I was saying that council has the option on its own volition to impose term limits on commissions and committees. You could still, if you want, to submit that to the voters. If you submit it to the voters, a future council cannot change it. Only the voters can change what the voters put in place. So that's just another thing to think about.
So here's maybe a path forward, then, hearing what Joanne is saying is, is that if we bring this back and deliberate on this question over the next few months, and we're going to be chatting about the clerk, the treasurer, and whether or not that is going to be appointed versus elected, and that question goes out to the voters, we'll also discuss in the commission and committees, which I would lean towards, frankly, us taking direct action on the question and putting that into place. But we could look at, you know, an election in that scenario. And the last item would be our term limits discussion. I think if we do come out of a decision that we want to make at this point, and what we feel is a ballot question, a ballot, you know, we want to put forward, et cetera, that we would approve that to go to the ballot, and that that would happen in May of 2020, right? And that that would, it would basically happen at a time, unless the council at the time decided that there was something wrong and they needed to change it or remand it. Could that be possible?
So we'll be coming back in 2020 for the questions relating to clerk, treasurer, and council term limits? Or commissions and committees. Do you want to do that earlier?
We will probably take care of that.
Or just do them all in May of 2020. I can back to you with all.
Well, no, I think this council can make the decision on the commissions, committees, right, as to term limits and the question. We could take care of that now. That doesn't need to come back.
So I'll, okay, I'll agenda that.
So it would really be the treasurer and the clerk, and stop me if I'm speaking out of turn, the treasurer and the clerk question, and then the term limits question. So what we'll do is basically bake the cake, right, make this thing, and it will come back to a previous council made, and that council has the discretion to be able to open it back up and entertain the question. Or they say, you know what, we're still in alignment with that process, let's go ahead and call the election.
Stephen will be here too for history at that point as well.
You two will be here.
Okay, so when do you want me to come back with the commissions and committees?
Just in the next month or two. Actually, it should all come back, I would say it would all come back at the same time. It feels like more of a package deal.
Discussion, yeah.
So the whole thing comes back?
Yeah, but I would, you could do separate agenda items.
No, no, no.
No, 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 right now. So in the next few months, to be clear, in the next few months, what we'd love to see is an agenda that has commission, committee, term limit, staff report, deliberation on that question. In that same meeting, the next item is appointments of treasurer and clerk and the ballot question associated with that, right, whether or not we could go to ballot with it, if we want to go to appointment, et cetera, and what that would look and feel like. And then the last item is the term limits question, and whether or not we should put it on the 2020 ballot, and if it would be consecutive terms, and what the wisdom and the logic is behind that. And if we approve the commissions, committees' term limits, that goes into effect immediately. If we approve the other two items, which is the appointed clerk and treasurer and the city council term limits, that goes into that box, which will be presented to council in May of 2020.
Okay.
And they will ratify that and/or say, you know what, that was a bad idea, and we probably need to take a look at that again, and they will have the votes to do so, if they want to. Is that fair? Does that seem logical?
No.
And just real quick, council, is that...
The registrar will be very happy with that.
Point of clarification.
I'm okay, and this is for future, but you just added a Rubik's Cube complexity to this. I just want to make sure I understand. So if we go to districts, so each district would have about 12,000, no, not even, maybe 10,000 voters, not even, 8,000 voters in it. And then we're saying every eight years, some, you have to switch that, yeah, that'll work, okay. Someone was telling me a story at JPIA that there are so few people in his district that he can't get his nomination papers signed, because he used to go to Kiwanis Club meetings and just pass it around and finding the...
There's a lot of horror stories like that.
Yeah, yeah, but these two can coexist. We can have districts and term limits, if we end up with districts.
That's not on the agenda, though.
It is, because I'm talking about term limits.
Oh, with term limits, okay. And I guess the future council will be able to reconcile that question if it becomes an issue.
As a point of clarification, I know that Councilmember Ward brought up the previous discussion of some consolidations of committees, but based on the direction that you're giving staff to come back is just to do an agenda report based on term limits for the committees and commissions.
I think we should isolate it, and then if we decide to amend the committees and the makeup, then we can have that as a different meeting. We'll have some heavy lifting to do before the end of the year. Are we okay with that?
Yes, because a lot of that discussion was on staff recommendations that oversee these committees. We wanted to hear back from them, so that can be a separate discussion.
Oh, yeah, of course, which would be a totally different staff report.
But it very much fits in, now that we're so big, we should make sure that having a coastal advisory committee and a watershed task force and a beaches commission are, you know, good uses of...
I do think by taking a look at the function and utility of the committees, we might be able to actually revitalize a lot of them. A lot of the time, if a committee isn't functioning well, it's because they don't have enough to do, or what they're doing isn't challenging enough, or whatever the case may be. So I think there's an opportunity to, I think there's an opportunity to improve participation, and also, I think the, just the makeup, staff time, et cetera. So you have the direction you need, and I think we're all, do we need a motion on that, or we all?
I've got it.
Okay. Do I have a motion? I guess I can make the motion since I...
She said she doesn't want to.
Oh, you're good? You're okay? Oh, okay, I'm so sorry.
It's not like you're adding it to the ballot, so it's fine.
Great. I think we have clarity on that item. Thank you, Chris, for bringing that up. I think it's worthy of answering that question.
Okay. Next item is consideration of nominating subregional representatives to the Southern California Association of Governments Policy Committees.
This was my ad at the last minute. We got this information and had a deadline, and since we had this meeting called, it fit within the deadline, so we added it for quick business.
Consideration of subregional representatives to Southern California. Who's our SCAG rep right now?
Lori.
Yeah. Subregional representatives, can you...
It has to be them.
Throw them under the bus.
Hey, Eric, do you have, actually, well, probably the best way to do it, do we have, do we have any events that they need to attend prior to the turnover of the council?
I'm not aware of that at this time, so I'm going to say no.
Well, so here's what I observe to be true. For our city, historically, we've done the minimum. We've gone annually to the meeting, and we voted on big stuff, or whatever the things are. So this is a step up from that to the regional level. If I were going to recommend that any of you get involved, it would be on the Transportation Committee of SCAG, and I'm not sure what the path is to get on that committee, but for our purposes, having a voice in the next two years at SCAG's transportation, and if you have to be on this to be on that, I don't know. So maybe we should find that out?
We can.
Okay, but...
Lori?
Does this answer your question? I noticed that the letter from OCOG says, "Once selected by the OCOG Board, the successful nominee will have the opportunity to express a preference for appointment to the SCAG Regional Council President, who will assign them to a policy committee."
So you're interpreting a policy committee, Transportation to be, yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the committees, and it sounds like you get on and then hope for it? Am I reading that right?
No, because I'm reading the first page. It says, "If you're interested in this opportunity, please submit a letter by Monday, August 6, expressing your interest in the appointment and indicating on which policy committees you would like to serve." So we do have to say a preference. And the first one is the Transportation and Communications Committee, which I'm interested in.
Well, go for it, then. Go for it.
I second perfectly.
Yeah.
So we have Kathy as our nominee, and we'll vote on that. All those who are in favor of Kathy... favor of Kathy appointing her nominee and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And just remind me, I heard motions all over.
Hold on. Does she, does Kathy need to recuse herself from this? Is there any financial compensation?
Yeah, there is $100, I think, $120.
It's publicly done, okay, all right. So, okay.
Schwartz?
There were no opposition.
You're going to double your city council.
Yeah.
So.
So funny, I never even asked for the money or the reimbursement. I was just like, oh, I don't, I got to submit stuff for that? Forget it.
But I know that one of the councilmembers from San Juan is on it, and she attends faithfully, and she says how beneficial it is for our region to have a voice there. So, I've always wanted to be on it.
I think that's great.
So.
So, let's talk, because Margaret Finley, who was last year's president, is on the JPIA board with me, and I can let her know that it's time we got a chance at this, because I think Minnagar is on it, too.
I would just like, because we're talking so much now about regional traffic, even more so because of this TCA thing that's going on. Yes, so, I would, I think we really need to be on that and have a voice, and we've learned so much more about it because of this issue. So, I think we really need to be on it.
Wonderful. So, we have a vote. We're approved.
Good. Oral communications, part two. I don't have any cards. City manager?
Nothing.
City attorney?
No, nothing more, thanks.
Council members?
Kathy? Chris?
I've got an item.
Yeah, I'm going to ask the council to support me in agendizing for discussion, Del Rio traffic study. Steve, I'm hopefully will be supportive of this. I've been getting phone calls from association members asking to see what the traffic count is out there and potentially, if the traffic count warrants it, restricting commercial vehicle traffic from Del Rio, much like we've done on Avenue of Vista Hermosa. But that would all be post a traffic study report and then obviously having that agendized for discussion.
Okay. Any concerns? Okay, great.
Maybe we'll take out the runoff.
Now, you're getting crazy, Steve.
Steve, you got anything? Kath, I mean, Lori?
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing I have here is the, I'm going to be meeting with Chief Peters in the next week to also take a look at the station and address some other items regarding, you know, other things we're going to be doing on the schedule. One of the things that came up in discussion was, is that, I'd love to get an update from him on, you know, we received one, I bet it was about six months ago, that he came and spoke about homeless issues and just kind of gave an appraisal, a little bit of a state of the city when it comes to public safety. And I submitted the request for him to come at one of our meetings coming up, and I can't remember which one worked best for him, but I, we'll just leave that open right now. We need to coordinate with him, but I was just going to let the council know that I've invited the chief to come and just give us an update on the public safety questions. We've had a lot of heated deliberation regarding the deputy addition. We've also had some unfortunate miscommunications regarding the budget cuts and the deputy additions we did, and so I think it's very important for the chief to come, and when we clear the air, we'll have an opportunity to have a conversation with him and to also show our appreciation for the chief for his services and the deputy services to our city. So, that's going to be coming up pretty soon. And I don't have anything more.
Ethan, I would just ask that council adjourn to an adjourned regular council meeting to be held on August 21st, 2018, in the council chambers located at 100 Avenue to Presidio San Clemente. Closed session items to be considered at 5:00 and the regular business meeting to take place at 6:00.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, Madam Cech, second by Schwartz. All those in favor? Aye. Passes five zero.
I'm like, I'm watching Tom Frank like roll right in here with his next meeting.
Tom is rocking it. Look at that.
Perfect timing.
Jeez Louise.